Let's be just to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, in Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
I will call a meeting to order. We have a forum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. I will recess the regular meeting and take a motion to open the budget amendment hearing.
Motion to open the budget hearing.
And I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. We are now in a public hearing. Is there any comments from the crowd?
And I, did I send you a copy of, we've talked about it before, but here's what
Yes.
The main, the main reason.
You went through them.
Roads, yeah.
So, do we need to repeat it? Although you went through it. Okay.
It was posted.
It was posted.
Yep, it was in the newspaper and everything.
Yep.
Recording.
Sorry about that. Do you have anybody on Zoom or anything? I guess, considering there is no questions or comments on this, I will take a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries. We will stay in recess here until eight thirty when the regular meeting will start. And we have a resolution here on the budget amendment. It's resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight to amend the fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four Worth County budget.
And it's thirty-eight?
Yeah, that's what this says.
Okay, we'll go with that.
Yeah, twenty thirty-eight, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Where is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty and amends fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four Worth County budget? As was published in official county newspaper, North and Anchor, Manley Junction. Signal November eighth and November ninth, twenty twenty-three to authorize an amendment and appropriation of funds to the appropriate departments as specified. You guys, Jackie went through all of these before. I'm not going to go through them again. I will take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight.
I will.
I will start.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Lowbert, aye. Motion carries and duly adopted. Rich, you're up next.
Looking at the minutes and it was an eight-thirty call order and then a meeting in the budget.
Got you up to date in a hurry, didn't we?
Yeah, so.
Keep you on your toes.
Yeah, well, I didn't even pay attention. Um, so we're looking at probably getting some, uh, we've got free hires we need to hire yet. I think I might send out offers for two this week. I got a couple where I want to schedule two. I know we're running against the line a little bit. Um, I want to make sure we get good candidates and good hires, so probably be sending out call-in today or whatever. Um, we tried to get, I think I told you guys a few weeks ago, we were trying to get a new boiler for Kensa and we were getting smacked out, so we didn't get any more quotes in, so we're just going to go with what we got last time. And then we did get some roofing quotes. I wanted to kind of bring these to you guys' attention just because on that storage shed out here in the, in the existing shop, we got several shingle quotes, steel quotes, take shingles off, put shingles on, and out of all of the quotes, I think, um, we've got VET roofing that gave us a quote for nineteen thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-eight cents for shingles and twenty thousand two hundred for steel. I think I'm going to go with the steel and have them.
That one's actually.
Thirty, a little more than that. Yeah, well, some of them are a lot more, but I think maybe VET has just got lower overhead and.
Yeah, and that they're like, oh, shingles for steel, I hear about those.
Well, we're going to go ahead and
Oh, do us.
So, um, and then I kind of informed you on the projects closing out. We're trying to get a mittful of project closed out and then, um, I do have on the agenda the annual or the biannual bridge inspection agreement to look at. I don't know if you guys had gotten to look at it or not.
Yeah.
Yes.
Read through it.
We are also going to have to, I didn't read through all of it because a lot of it's standard, but I know there's more, um, more analysis that needs to be done on our bridges this year. One thing we got to do is get the local fire departments to give us their weights on all their vehicles. So we got to start evaluating load postings for emergency vehicles too. It's going to get probably worse as we get going. I think I kind of maybe gave you guys a heads up weeks ago about how things just seem to progress. So, I don't know what that does to emergency response if we start saying the, 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 the fire trucks are posting for this bridge and so now we've got more detours. How do we keep fixing bridges without having the money to fix them? I mean,
Right.
when you look at it from a standpoint of they've been going over the bridges for years the way they are, and I'm not saying that's good or bad, but they've been doing it now and now if we got to start evaluating them for that. I, I don't know, we want to.
Are you guys going to start evaluating your own trucks too then?
Well.
Are they going to, are they going to start doing that?
On some of them, on some of them, I mean, we're a regular tandem truck that some of them we have to look at and say we can't go over them and that's when the roll form is going to, you know, it seems goofy to go all the way around the, the, the section and have the, have a pickup plow clean off a bridge deck, but I know in some cases we have to, but it just seems a little bit, you know.
Right.
It, it really puts a burden on everybody and like I said, we don't have all the funds. We need to keep everything up and, and I get the, the, the weights on the emergency vehicles and the other thing, but I just don't know how we keep sustaining our structures when legislature keeps adding more legal weights to everything. I'm like, sooner or later, we just can't do it.
Maybe they'll throw more funding at it when they realize that emergency vehicles can't get to where they need to go because bridges are that bad.
Maybe.
Any fun emergency vehicles, huh?
Yeah, right.
Oh, it didn't even. Um, the, the, uh, the not to exceed fee for the professional services for our twenty twenty-four bridge inspection is thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars including expenses. And I would recommend that we go ahead and get this approved so we can.
Is there a motion to approve the professional service agreement between Worth County Ongawa and WHKS and company? So, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. You want?
So then, is the, uh, budget amendment that I submitted then, is that been approved already then?
Yeah. I'm going to check, the, the check will be in here.
Okay, so I'll need to, because it included the amendment to my DOT budget that had all the other numbers that were changed in there, so I'll have that submitted to the, to my, to my state budget and then, um, payments. We'll start putting more payments out too because we've got two box over that are now complete. They'll want payment for those and then the remainder of the paving projects will be done. So you'll see the next, or so, some more dollars spent through that, yeah.
Then let me know when they are because we'll use that fifteen hundred fund instead of your zero zero two zero.
How does that work? The fifteen hundred fund? I don't understand how that works.
It's, it's the actual fund, the capital fund for the project where the, where the money from along.
Do you transfer it to secondary roads?
No.
That doesn't help me out.
No, but I put it in.
Okay.
I, I put it in department twenty. It's just coming from a different fund. I, I think it'll still pull into your reports and if it doesn't, we'll, 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 we'll jump over that.
Well, we'll make sure they get paid is the biggest thing.
Yeah.
Figure out the backdoor paperwork.
And it's your, it's all your numbers other than the fifteen hundred.
Because I needed it to show that I'm spending that money out of my budget. Is that still showing it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the biggest thing for me is if I'm lending it, I've got to show that it's being spent. Some counties have taken it where the engineer's office would submit the pay request to the auditor. The auditor would pay out of a different fund and then it wouldn't go through secondary roads as an expense, but I think it's sometimes cleaner if we just keep it through secondary roads and not have to.
But we need to keep it in a separate fund because it.
Whatever you guys need to do it.
Yeah.
As long as it shows.
That's what the auditor recommended, so.
Well, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
That's all I've got for you today.
Any other questions you guys got for Rich?
I think so.
Thank you, Rich.
Anything on the agenda that I need to stick around for a little while, I'm going to get busy on other things.
Sure.
Well, you can call me.
No, I don't see anything.
You guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
You too. Uh, drainage. We got some warrants.
Yeah, and she, but I wanted to explain some stuff.
And then we got that folder to go through. We can do the one most, she gets here.
A motion to approve the stamp, the straightest lanes.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any other further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that motion carries.
About last week's.
Hey Val, you've got some.
Yes. So I thought Doug Meyer has two blowouts that need fixed. Uh, we've contacted Nick before after. And he's going to go look at those. And then I had Dennis Meyer fall in. And he's got two. And Colton talked to him on the phone and then I contacted Nick to see if he could go. And if those two, since they're kind of over in the same general section of the county.
So you need a separate motion on each one of them?
Probably just motion to like just approve that Nick had picked on.
There's a, we need a motion to fix the tiles and DD, which two?
Uh, DD eleven name F. I've got two of them.
Yeah, and then the other one?
And that one's for Dennis and then, um, Dugs are in two different sections, DD eleven forty-eight A and DD thirty-four lap nine F one.
The next motion to approve the, the Nick take care of the.
Both of those.
All those.
Yeah.
I'll send out that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
And I just wanted to let you guys know Val's been doing a really good job of digging into those. She knows all the little laterals and everything and she's been keeping all the bills straight.
Yep, that's awesome. We've noticed that.
Thank you, Val.
She does good. You got everything from B and W figured out.
So I sent him some emails on Friday with concerns, um, some of them I'm concerned with is, um, I contacted him on September nineteenth and told him not to do DD ten because we were having a county go spray DD ten.
Yeah.
Uh, specifically lat nine and Mike had the rest of it and said it was fine. He had just a couple little ones here or there on the upper, but he said it was mainly lat nine, or not lat nine, not eight. Um, I got three bills from them for DD ten.
Hmm.
Last seven, lat nine, which he said was clean, but he charged half out each.
Yep.
And then he charged like three hundred something for the upper.
So guess we drove them regardless. I mean,
Right.
Like the DD ten donor, for example, it was pretty clean, but he still took it roughly out. He probably charged us minimum a half hour just to basically look and make sure it's not missing anything, I would guess.
But if somebody else sprayed it.
Well, and we did send him an email.
Yeah.
Except, don't do DD ten. I remember that email coming through.
But be honest, to me, I would rather that he double-checked that in case Mike missed something. Something would have maybe still shown up at that point, uh, three or two that he could have missed or didn't quite get enough, but I'd still rather have him drive it. That's my opinion. And again, that needs to be on his spray list next year. Going over the silver link that Mike did needs to be on the list next year.
DD six.
DD two needs to be on the list next year.
Mm-hmm.
While we're at it, because they've already, they've already stopped going back and drive by there.
Yep.
Little stones, so I think that needs to be in our.
Are they done with that?
Yeah, I think they burned the trees actually.
Yes, I talked to Nick and DD two is done, so I should be getting the file bill, the third installment, and I guess, I think he did come in under the quote a little bit, so.
And there'll be a completion.
Yeah, so this separate risk of all that or damages and all that and stuff.
One other thing that we're under general drainage, basically, I had a call from the landowner in DD seven and we've got some beaver issues down there. Um, put them out in the spring, moved down further south, made a bigger dam and actually there was extra water and somebody spilled his fault. Hard to believe in a dry year, but they made a big dam. And his comment was, he finally hired his own guy to come in there and actually supplementing him some, plus he'll probably bring him into the county, but he suggested that we raise the beaver bounty to a hundred dollars. And so that's something we should probably, I think, get on for an action item.
I mean, it still has to be in a drainage ditch, it still has to go through the landowner or, you know.
And the other thing I was going to ask is are we going to get all the beavers if we aren't, if we are still just in drainage districts or will we still have a problem? And I know that's.
You know, so that kind of opens up a can of worms, if you want to be, to be honest, because Elcrick Marsh, for example, if somebody wants to trap, is actually, even though we don't have anything to do with it, we have a lot of drainage ditches and tiles that dump right into Elcrick. And it actually affects their fault. So should we be paying for somebody goes through the effort to trap them? I don't know.
It gets, that's great, I mean, yeah, we got to protect them because.
It, it can easily affect drainage, you know, if they get those dams big enough, so.
And some can affect our roads at some point possibly.
Secondary road, yes.
Yeah, I just, I don't know where to start and stop on that.
Yeah, because I know we had one a few years ago when I first started up there on verdicts that they built in their creek and it's not part of the drainage system, but it would have probably would have had to get really big before it affected the road, but I suppose it could have backed up more over to, but.
Were you aware of that one that we paid for anyway, even though it wasn't in a drainage?
I think so, I remember. But I think as long as the record, the original request would come from the landowner that says, okay.
Yeah, because he don't.
You know, Elcrick Marsh is a dam in the respective night drainage and I can't get a guy in here because nobody's trapped beavers, but you know, we put that little carrot out there plus what they get, so I think we need it for discussion under drainage next week to raise that bounty.
I reached out to a couple counties around us just to kind of see what, and most counties go like forty fifty, there are a couple that do more.
It's just, I guess, and I'm not a.
I glad I heard them, Ben.
Fur prices are terrible.
Cast, casters were more than the hill.
Oh, yeah, but you still got to trap them and, and you always get somebody in here.
The guys that trap just enjoy doing it, I think, versus the money invested, you know, it's a hobby for them.
But I think, you know.
Some of them are getting too old to do it anymore.
You know, if you don't place somebody a little bit today after.
So we put the bounty on not just drainage ditches.
We could extend it. If, if it would have, I think it needs to be affecting, it's still the request to trap them should still come from the landowner. We can still leave that to the region or someone.
And it should probably be assessed either by drain, you guys for drainage or.
I know that's, you know, five hundred dollars is stuff to assess on a drainage ditch that covers eighteen thousand acres, but you know.
But the key is to have a landlord.
And have the paperwork.
Yeah, we got to stick with that.
You got to have something so they don't.
Because I mean, I mean personally, like I just, I mean, I, I got a farm that it's a private drainage, it's nothing to do with the county and we don't handle it at all. And we took them out ourselves. We had a trap and we stayed after them and they finally left. It's not saying they won't come back, but in that situation, on that, that side of the road where my water goes, there's absolutely no county drainage system and it's all privately owned by all of the senior areas, so. And that's, that'd be our, that'd be our dime to go after them and, you know, talk to the landlords, I think. But if it happens to affect the drainage district, then I think we should pay.
No, yeah, we definitely should. It's, it's maintenance.
Yeah.
Because the cause is an issue with the, with the creek banks and with backing up and blowing out bigger tile and.
And it's probably something, you know, I mean, I know it's always hard to charge ahead of time too for these kind of things, like when you do a big drainage project to keep a, you know, cushion in there, so you got something to pay for beaver damage and stuff. It's tough.
We just don't do it anymore because people complain that we're holding their money and when we could use it as a big pot, it was different, but since we have to do each separate, it, it, it's just easier to do stamp warrants and assess once a year.
We got somebody that knows what they're doing.
We're getting it to where it should be fluent in the next year or two, it should be.
Good. It's just somebody that likes to reach. Good for you. Well, that's good.
Yeah, put that.
Anything else, Val?
Not, that should be it. Just next Monday we got our two big meetings, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, and then we'll add that to the agenda for next week.
Yeah, bevers, okay. I'll do some more and see kind of what everyone else around us is also doing, but.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have claims?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we might need to sign them.
I didn't want you to go up the steps and me holler at you.
I'm glad you're.
There's a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Third.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'm over to it.
And here's for payroll.
A motion approved payroll claims.
And I'll second it.
Now you can say.
I have a motion in a second to approve the payroll claims. Is there any further step on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries.
Oh, that one's payroll, yeah.
Yeah.
You have any other ones that? And there was no liquor, uh?
Uh, reports. I got a report.
You got a report?
Yep.
I'll take a motion. What was the report on here? Uh, oh, the auditor.
No.
Nope, nope, nope.
It's clerk of court.
He does that to us every time. Take a motion to approve the report from the clerk of court.
Almost.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And that's, this puppy's just anywhere.
If. No liquor, no payroll. Next one is.
Take fifty, break in with some.
Oh.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, it's eight forty-five, so let's do the twenty twenty-three city school election second canvas of votes.
Okay, so basically what we have is we have abstracts. And then what we have is basically just read off of those and there's really nothing. This is the abstracts from each one of the counties. So you just add all those together and you get to that. So.
You need it.
So the, um, director at large Nancy Lund received three hundred and twenty votes between the, um, four counties. Sean Arthur received four hundred and thirty-nine and there were two scattering for a total of seven hundred and sixty-five votes and Sean Arthur won. For director district one north B, Amber Neering received two thirty-six, Joseph Rao received two eighty-five and Joe Ryan received two twenty, scattering of one for seven hundred and forty-two votes and, um, just for our, one that one. Director district two south B, David Lutt received two fifty-seven, Joshua Burnit, Berman received five oh three, scattering was two for a total of seven hundred and sixty-two votes. Joshua won that one. Then public measure WQ, um, there were five hundred and sixty yes votes. There were two hundred and six no votes, so that measure will be passed. We'll sign all this fun stuff after.
Enough, easy enough to get the bulk of it last year.
So then I have resolution.
This is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine, certification of the multi-e jurisdictional election results combined city school election. Do you want me to read the rest of that one? You guys got it on?
Oh, you just got the result.
You just got the results. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine?
I will start.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Stone?
Aye.
Lowberg, aye. Motion carries.
There's two spots for you to sign there.
Anything else you have to do on election?
Sign stuff I have to do.
Gotcha. Okay, now we'll go back to we kind of interrupted you. Was there? About the next one?
Obviously, yeah. Always bees. And they always go off. So. And that is our third party provider.
Right, yes. Um, the buy down fee is, the current fee is seven dollars and fifty cents or a hundred and fifty dollars monthly minimum. The renewal fee is going to eight. And the broker fee is two dollars and fifty cents and that is going to stay the same at two dollars and fifty cents. Is there, would you like to look at this?
No.
Motion to approve, obviously.
They use.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. There's that. Uh, then we got an engagement letter with Northland Securities as the underwriter.
Well, as you guys know, we've started the process again.
Yep.
We've bought, bought stuff again, so we're going to have to find money for it, so.
A motion to approve, motion security.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Um, we're down to water system improvement projects. I talked to Jason Petersburg this week and he was going to get back to the DNR because they had some questions about the wells out there. So he was going to get on, he was working on that and he was going to get on top of that. And then he said he was getting close on the water and sewer rates, so I got up to date on that. Um, couldn't work back, Val, Melissa, are you on? Yes, you are.
Morning.
Morning.
I am, uh, working with Heartland Power and, um, I dig for a, uh, survey for the interchange and we're going to do one, um, for the NAC, NAC's codes. So we'll see, um, what entities would best be suited out there. Um, and then I went to the alliance meeting last week and we are going to work for, on a regional housing conference. So that'll be in the spring.
Okay, you guys got any questions for Melissa?
No.
Thank you, Melissa, if you have anything else.
All right, thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Uh, EMS, continue discussion, anything new on that? Do you have a meeting or?
We have, we're, we're going to meet, uh, next week.
Gotcha.
There's one tonight down in Arlington.
Okay. Are you going to that one?
Yes.
All righty. Okay, um, I would imagine everything's going good with Josh out the people's service. I haven't heard anything of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All the trustees.
Oh, yeah.
Brett didn't get anything.
I got a email from, or text from Andy Ozil, that's all I got, so.
Anyway, sorry.
That's okay. It's good to bring it up though.
Hopefully it's posted.
Yeah, I know we have to talk to him about getting those, getting all those people.
Unless you got an email.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I got to talk to you three. I just had some people with some, uh, problems with sanitarian stuff. Uh, some communication problems, so I'll keep it called today, but I did talk to some people this weekend. Uh, took a long, long time to get some water tests. I shouldn't.
Remind him of those calls he was gonna give us on equipment too.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do that.
Um. Department had discussion. Anything you guys got?
I would like to talk, um, regarding the zoning thing.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot of. Things going out, out in the country. I've been driving, um. I did finally get ahold of Matt DuVay. I'm guessing maybe I had. Eight permits. And some of them were for ag, but nothing, you know, which is fine. But how, what is the next step? If you guys have that zoning thing going on. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna manage it and watch everything, but. If you've. If you pass that zoning thing for the whole county and people are not. Getting a permit. Because I, that one, I, I mean, I was looking to see if there was a permit and there's not.
No, and I'm saying, I don't know. And they don't really need it, but I mean, it's still in the wrong place. That's your garden.
So, you know, there's other things going on other than, you know, there's, like Mark and I talked this morning about, you know, there's a lot of lines underneath. In the road ditches now, and if people are digging too close and.
That would be kind of a utility thing there.
It will exactly.
Fall under us probably, but yeah.
I mean, I, just as a heads up, I don't know.
I don't know properly how to enforce it.
Well, I'm not sure how to enforce the thing. Because we have a problem. I'm in Heartland and. They don't even get.
Well, unless you get somebody to start enforcing it, it's not gonna happen. And it's something, we need a procedure. We need somebody to be watching.
It's impossible for one.
Cause you gave him a grace period. You gave him a grace period. And I think it was a year ago, December, that it was supposed to be.
Yep. Well, and that's, that's the thing. I guess if people see it, everybody should be watching for it.
See something, say something?
Yeah, as far as showing the employees, if you see it. I mean, you, it should be checked on just to see if there is permits for that. If not, then, then it should be, Matt should be contacting these people, letting them know they need the permits.
Yeah.
Um, and if they're putting stuff. Too close, you know, if they're not following setbacks, there are some setbacks from property lines and stuff that you really.
Well, even if there isn't necessarily a term, I mean, if somebody says, okay, they're building a shed, for example. But you think it's too close, then he should still go and check on it and say, no, you cannot build in the county right away. You know, basically that's what it would mean. I mean, and utility companies are gonna do that.
Yeah.
If they're notified.
Well, and then that goes to, do we need somebody actually in the county?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, it's, it's one of those things where nobody knows about it. If a permit doesn't pop up and just all of a sudden a building shows up, well, then is it too late to them? Because part of the building permit is how far away from property lines.
Correct.
Because you're supposed to be a certain setback just from property lines because of.
Right.
High lines and all stuff like that. And then, and we've, I know the county's paid for buildings before because snow hits them because they're too close to the roads. So that's another thing. That's why, you know, that should be set back a little further because of that snow hit, you know, we're trying to clear the roads. It's, you can't control it, but. So, yeah, probably needs.
The road came first.
Right, right.
Well, the problem is, is who's gonna monitor?
The one I know about.
Well, if anybody sees anything, you just have to, they just have, the question has to get asked, is there a permit for this?
I mean, I've been getting him in touch with Matt.
Yeah.
I give him Matt's number and let Matt know where it's at and what's going on.
Yeah.
And not many fees come in.
I was a little afraid of that.
I mean, I could start jotting all these down, but Matt says he hasn't gotten very many. And, and some of it is even in the original zoning.
Right.
Oh, yeah. The ones I'm dealing with is in Heartland.
And does there need to be some awareness? I mean, do we need to start putting up stuff on Facebook or something? And that seems to be the only place.
We gotta get the education out there.
Quickest and gets out.
Nobody reads the news. No, no offense, Chris, but people.
I'll tell you what, and I shouldn't say this.
Or don't read those parts of the newspaper.
You've got fines in there. You do a few of them and that thing, the word will spread fast.
Well, and you almost.
Yep, you have somebody that's gonna enforce it.
And you gotta be consistent then.
My theory was that I thought Matt was doing that.
We should. That'd be his job.
But you guys had to talk to him about it.
He doesn't know.
Well, I mean, yeah.
We don't know that there's not permits. How can you, you can't blame him because.
He doesn't know what's going on.
Maybe it's something we just need to look at. Yeah.
Well, and it, it took me about three to four months to even get his attention to give me the permits. I know you guys just said, you know, let's notify him and, and it's like, no.
And I, I can talk to them too, if it's, if it's getting to be too much, maybe we should put somebody closer that's more local. I, he, he took it on after Jane had passed. We didn't have choice. We had some. Um, and so he kind of took it on from there as being Winnebago is, you know, so.
And maybe talk to Winnebago too.
Yeah, cause I know they're not getting permits from him, cause I talked with Winnebago.
Sure they're not, yeah.
Cause I said, what, what is your. Happy place to where he will contract. I don't, I, nothing against Matt, you know, I, I know, you know, he's just covering, but.
Do you wanna look into that? Or all of us look into that and see if somebody would be interested in monitoring that?
Right. Yeah, I mean. It's, yeah. We're paying Matt to do it, so we could pay somebody else if there's somebody local that wants to do it.
Yeah.
Interpret.
Interpret the, the zoning law that's there and then take care of the, take care of the permitting.
You have to have a contact person, somebody sees something and then that person needs to go out and. Check. I mean, it is one thing to worry when you get there, but you know, if it doesn't look right, you still need the person to.
Yeah.
Check it.
And also I, I've been in communication with Heath regarding the, um, septic.
Updates.
Um. Yeah.
No.
And I. I've got a call in. To a couple other offices, but just to let you know. If I, I talked with Jackie a little bit, if there was something in agreement between. Each county and the state that things will get updated as they get sold and they're not getting updated.
And that's in public health. That, that would be a.
Well, I, I contacted public health and they are not even gonna touch it. So then that's when.
It's a stable.
So that's why. And Heath is gonna give me a report because we have not gotten anything from people's, or people's services in a while.
Right.
Um. There's just other quirks in that report that we used to give. And I, I mean, I don't. If, if it says owner. It's the contractor. Is that legal?
You can self, you can sell.
If he's, like if he's eighty years old.
Yeah. You can still self do it.
Yeah, it's, and that's a. That's a rule. If we wanted to change it, we could, but the county, you can still install your own.
Okay.
Um.
But it has to be.
There's some counties that have, you have to be certified to install it. Um, that's just.
Right, right.
You know, Floyd County is one of them. Uh, Mitchell. Is recovering, requiring that, um, they're just, you have to be certified to install.
And do they get inspected or is there some kind of report afterwards?
Chris would have gone on in the past.
Yeah. As far as, as far as the permit, there's supposed to be, that's all supposed to be out there.
Yeah, cause it says inspected, yes, and.
No, I know.
Yeah. Um, but the reason why I brought that up and it kind of ties in with the permit thing. Um, cause that steel utility dome by where my mom used to live does have a bathroom in it. Well, there was no permit for the building. And I know there's a bathroom in it.
So there should be a septic permit out.
So. So Heath is looking into that too, but. I'm just giving you guys a heads up.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a farm shop still.
I mean.
It's not, it's not a, it's just a process that people just go through. It's not.
It's slipped too many years.
It's not a huge thing. And in all honesty, another thing that we're gonna get into that whole discussion too is probably the cost of these permits. We are the cheapest county around.
Yes.
I pay double in Cerro Verde County, over double, yeah, about double what we pay here. So we probably look at rates at that rate to offset some of those.
Right.
And zoning and that could go hand in hand and maybe that person may be in need to revamp. The, to that person being different or having different job duties or something.
Right, yeah. No, I could, because that's what Mitchell does, is only a sanitarium and a state person.
I just didn't want Worth County to.
No, we need to settle with the state. Yeah, we need to say that.
The heads up.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, we can figure out how to. Find somebody that would be, you know, if Matt wants to do it, I think that's great, but on the other side of the point, if he's got too much on his plate.
Well, he lives west of Buffalo Center. He's clear over on the other side of one of the area counties. That's a pretty good job for him to be.
Running all over here. You know, and I can watch my small area, but that's.
Yeah, and that's the thing, only sees.
You only see so much.
I mean, till we get to this time here, you can't see a lot of stuff.
Yep, that's like I said, when the corn come out, there was the building.
Maybe that's such a thing too, when you talk with Rich about it, maybe we get some signs. You know, a lot of these counties, every road, county blacktop road that comes into the county, it's written on there. Mitchell County is zoned, Cerro Verde County is zoned. They have to.
Probably a good idea.
See what that would take the, put them on the sides that are already there, the, the signpost and just another small sign that says we're county is zoning county.
Well, and we have people on the roads. I mean, can, you know, like deputies or secondary roads, I know, but I mean.
If you're.
If you see something, you just say an address, I mean.
You just shoot an email out.
Yeah.
That little feedback goes a long ways, yeah.
Or there's somebody in thirteen months that could drive around and.
Nobody, maybe somebody's rule?
Maybe.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything out there? Is there anything on? Chris Kenson said, let me know if we can get awareness of zoning permits in a more visible parts of the paper where that would be news items or advertising or both.
Well, it was probably. When you did it.
Yeah, he said it couldn't hurt to remind people of a new process. Let's see what this one appears as. Teresa. The recorder said Sam mentioned last week, we got our data back to the eve of the seventh. And I recreated the days of the eighth and ninth and I came in on eleven, ten. I spent a day getting things caught up. We are up and working and waiting to see when next attempts with update slash import is with Tyler. Happy Thanksgiving doll. That's.
Hopefully it doesn't disappear again.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's on there, so. All right, I guess we'll move on to supervisor weekly. What did you have, AJ? What you, Mar?
Just a discussion with Bob Beaver, so.
Uh, I had Partners for Children. We of course went through the financials and being in the first quarter here, there's much. And then they talked a little bit about the state realignment. And I guess the state's still working on that big time, trying to get. They really didn't have any answers there. I had, uh, North Iowa Children's Alliance and there we went through the financials again. And then one of the things that we had a report on was Sarah Bordeaux is on their own doing a. Local childcare workforce initiative because of the lack of childcare facilities in Cerro Verde County. And I thought, you know, we've run, everybody's run into that problem, so. That was the, kind of the big emphasis of the, a lot of that was talked about at that meeting, so. Other than that, that's all I had. Um. Next week. Other than what you're gonna add there for beavers. Anything else you guys wanna add that?
It's a fun drainage day.
Oh, yes.
Did, um. Being you're stalking a drainage, can I ask something? Or you don't allow that anymore?
We don't allow that.
Never.
One of us can chat with you as soon as we're done.
Yeah.
Otherwise it's noon to Thursday before to get on the agenda.
Yeah, that's why.
In writing.
Yeah.
Always one of us can chat with you on the hall when we're done.
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, we probably should change that and probably have a small period at the end of these meetings for a little input, but. Yeah.
That's still my discussion.
Supervisor. District two meeting, who's going to that? And did we send in these?
I am going to the district two supervisors meeting in Charles City along with you.
Yeah.
And you're going to Winnebago. And you sent in the fees, and me, I know, did you send them for you?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
I know I dropped mine off up there, so check it. Well, check for both of us.
Okay, I think I might have done the.
There's a fees like twenty bucks. Yeah, it showed up on the, on the, on the report. So I got that right on who's going where, what?
Yeah.
I'll check right after the meeting.
And then the December first with the drainage in Fort Dodge, I'm going to that. And you've already sent those fees in, right? Yep. Are you going to that, AJ?
Wait one.
I don't know, did you?
Did you turn?
Did you turn?
Did you ever do this thing? I never did.
There, there it is, right there.
You guys back.
Torbert kept sending emails reminding you.
No, we haven't sent yours in.
I'll say, I'll save the county a few bucks.
Okay. Yeah. Anything else on there?
Nope.
Try to keep adding stuff as we go.
Gotcha. On that case, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
The move.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.